Again, it's nice to see a full house. Nice to see a full house. Administration, staff, students, teachers, people of the community. It's great. I'd like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee meeting, December 14th, 2017, Cumberland High School Transitional Building at 7:07 PM. And ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And maybe our chorus can start us off. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee. Mrs. Goggins and Mr. Hess has a motion to approve the approval of the agenda. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman, all in favor. Eyes have it, six zero. I would like to state for the record that Mr. Denon is not, is absent today, not present at the meeting. Next item on the agenda is the Student Government Report, the Student Activities. Anyone here representing the student government? Please step up to the podium. State your name. Hello, ladies?
Good evening. My name is Brianna Nuey, and I'm the class president for the class of 2020.
And I am Caleb Lou, a chair member for the class of 2020.
On the 5th of December, CHS held its open house for incoming freshmen. There we showcased art clubs and sports teams, as well as all the diversity CHS has to offer.
This month, we also started Adopt a Family, an event where the student government helps out families in need who cannot afford gifts for the holidays. The student government, as well as the rest of CHS, donated money to help these families through the holidays. This year, we have sponsored one family from CHS and two families from BF Norton. The presents will be delivered early next Tuesday, the 19th.
Winter ball tickets also began selling today. Because of the popularity of this dance, the ticket sales have slightly changed this year. We will begin by selling tickets to seniors only for the first four days. We will then continue to open ticket sales to each class after a few days. The schedule will be seniors, December 14th to December 18th. Seniors and juniors, December 19th to the December 21st. Seniors, juniors, and sophomores, January 2nd to January 4th. And all classes, January 5th to January 9th. The dance will take place on the 19th of January at Wright's Farm.
Thank you for your time, and have a sparkly evening.
Thank you, ladies. Happy holidays. Excellent update. I see you're staying for the whole meeting. Is that why you're going back this way? Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, 11:09, 2017. The special meeting, 12:06, 2017. The Approval of Minutes Executive Session, 11:09, 2017. Executive Session, 12:06, 2017. And Executive Session, 12:06, 2017. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Demonic makes a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Do I have a second? Mr. Fiorello. I apologize. Mr. Demonic, hold that, hold that motion. The, also included in that is the Enrollment Report of 12:01, 2017. The School Police Report of 11:01, 2017. And the Residency Truancy Report of 12:01, 2017. Mr. Demonic makes a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello and Mrs. Friedman. All in favor? Eyes have it, six zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, and what I'm thinking, okay, yep, we can. Report out of Executive Session Meeting. Report out of Executive Session Meeting on 12:14, 2017, which was this evening. There was no vote out of executive, and a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Demonic makes a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor? Eyes have it, six zero. We're moving this along, folks. Moving it along. Next item on the agenda, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are very pleased to announce that we have the McCourt Middle School Chorus here this evening, and they're going to sing a few songs for us. Come on up, everybody. Under the leadership of Shannon Davis, the chorus director.
I would, I would also like to recognize that the McCourt Principal is here, Dr. Jay Masterson. Mrs. Coughlin is here also, North Cumberland Middle School. Sorry, Mrs. Coughlin, I saw you.
I've been dreaming. Four houses, three friends, and two children, and a partridge in a pear tree. Love and joy come to you, and to you that Christmas do. And God bless you, and send you a happy new year. And God send you a happy new year. Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas.
It's on? Okay. Excellent. I'd just like to say that presentation, those songs were very chilling to me, and very passionate and very moving. So, thank you very much. We're going to take a quick break. Want to say happy holidays to everyone. If you'd like to stay, the meeting's going to continue. If not, I would like to give a free pass on all the homework, but I don't have that kind of authority, so I apologize. But, thank you, students and parents. Have a great night.
Forgive me for having my back to the members of the school committee. Good evening, once again, everyone. And it's my pleasure to acknowledge Linda Lucia. And just to remind everyone, what we go through each year, we nominate a Support Professional of the Year. So, we go through this process. And the process is, we ask all of our principals to nominate a support staff person that they feel is worthy of this recognition, being the Support Staff Person of the Year. And as you can imagine, we have a lot of really dedicated, excellent support staff personnel that, that do a lot, not only to support students, but also to support staff and families as well. So, it's not an easy decision, because we have a lot of good people. And what we do is, we hear from each of the principals, share information about the individuals that they have nominated. They usually have something very nice written about the person. They share that with the group, and then we vote. And it's my pleasure to let you all know that this year's Support Professional of the Year is Linda Lucia. So, what I'd like to do is share with all of you what Cheryl Vaughn, the principal of Community School, wrote about Linda. It was, it is with great pleasure that I nominate Linda Lucia for District Educational Support Professional for 2017. Linda demonstrates the tenants of our school to the T. She is respectful, responsible, and ready to work each and every day. She interacts with hundreds of parents, students, and staff on a weekly basis. She typically not only meets their requests, but goes above and beyond, offering assistance to make situations better for each person. Mrs. Lucia is usually the first person who greets families and children. Her approach is always respectful, helpful, and kind. She is well-known in the community as the one you go to for help. Linda understands the complexities of a school the size of community, and is always thinking about how to mainstream processes to improve the overall function for the school. She arrives early and leaves late most days, and she volunteers for all CSA events. She often volunteers for committees at school and beyond, including school safety and hospitality. Extending her role outside of community school, Mrs. Lucia is often recruited to assist others within the district. She does so with a willing and giving attitude. Mrs. Lucia's impact is felt by many in the school department and the town of Cumberland, and this is why Linda Lucia is the 2000 District Education Support Professional of the Year. So, in addition to this lovely plaque, which Linda gets to bring home, we also have a plaque that has the names of all of the recipients over the last several years. And this, this one hangs proudly in the, in the entrance to this building in the main foyer. So, Linda's name has already been added. 2017 Cumberland School Department District Education Support Professional of the Year. Congratulations. Congratulations, Linda. Tina's going to want to take a picture. You should hold this one, too.
Mrs. Lucia, I would, I would like to mention that typically, Mrs. Lucia, the Professional of the Year, writes the chairperson's graduation high school speech. So, I'll be in touch.
It is also apropos, we, we have already celebrated the fact that community school has been recognized as a national Blue Ribbon School, but I think it's appropriate that we acknowledge community school at, at a school committee meeting. So, I think we've heard all of the wonderful news about community school, and just a couple of things that I think are worth repeating. Community School is only one of three schools in the state of Rhode Island to earn the designation in, this designation in 2017. Community School is the first school in the town of Cumberland to earn this distinction. And I think the thing that is most impressive to me is the fact that there are close to 100,000 public and private schools in the country. 342 schools earned the distinction of being designated a Blue Ribbon School, and community elementary school is one of those. So, when you think about it percentage-wise, only less than 1% of the schools in the United States of America earn this distinction, and therefore, we can without question state that community school is one of the best schools in the country. So, this is how the, the process works. Clearly, a school has to demonstrate outstanding performance in a number of areas. It is the state of Rhode Island that nominates a school for consideration. The Department of Ed nominated community elementary school, and there is an extensive application process which must take place. It is sent to the United States Department of Ed, and the United States Department of Ed spends a tremendous amount of time reviewing all of the applicants, and then they decide who is deserving of this recognition. And, you know, the application is important, of course, and I know that, I just want to recognize two individuals that spent a lot of time on the application. Trish Porah is one. I don't think Trish is here, but I know Shannon Bissett is here. It, you know, I want to publicly recognize Shannon for the significant amount of time and effort that it took to really give an accurate depiction of the good work that happens at community school. So, and I also, I think it's important for us to recognize Cheryl's predecessor, Cindy Giroux, who played a key role in, in the fine work that is happening at community school. So, I'd like to acknowledge her publicly as well. But we have this nice little recognition that we would like to share with you, Cheryl, if you could just come up. And it simply says, Educational Excellence Award Presented to Community School 2017, National Blue Ribbon School, the United States Department of Education. So, on behalf of the school committee, congratulations to you and your school for the wonderful work that's being done.
Who you want to come up? All right, faculty you want, so we, faculty, come on up, because Tina's going to want to take a picture. Hold on. Can you put everybody in?
Mr. Chairman, the, the final item under the Superintendent's Report is a presentation on the middle school field trip to Washington, DC. Dr. Masterson is here with Sean Connolly, who are going to, I believe, gentlemen, you're going to be presenting some information, or Sean is going to, you both are going to be presenting some information on the, on the field trip. But I think it's also important to recognize, I don't, apparently it was on the news this evening, but Sean Connolly, a social studies teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, was a recipient of the Golden Apple Award on Channel 10.
Mr. Mitch, Mr. Mitchell.
I got to tell you, I get it, it's amazing, this is the honest-to-God truth, how many contacts I get from parents who have such wonderful things to say about the impact that Sean Connolly is having on their children. So, he is an impressive teacher. I've been in his classroom, and when you go in there, you know, that, you know, we've talked about three kinds of teachers. Those who complain, those who explain, and those who inspire. There's no question that Mr. Connolly inspires. So, congratulations to you, Sean, on, on that.
All right, so. Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell, hold on one second. I, I would like to, I apologize, I would like to commend the community school and the staff. Many of us were at the Blue Ribbon Event, so we did a lot of dedications there, but again, I just wanted to commend the excellence that's, at that school, as Mrs. Malcolm's looking at me. Okay? Because I love JJM also, Mrs. Malcolm. And I'd like to say, Mr. Connolly, I've, I've known you for a while, and I believe I remember when you were looking for a job. Yes? So, I'm glad you landed here at Cumberland, and you have a great leader at that school as well, so. Oh, Mrs. Malcolm, look at that, right? What a coincidence. Excellent, excellent. So, I do welcome Dr. Masterson and Mr. Connolly. I don't, I don't know who, somebody doing the... Okay, Mr. Connolly. Dr. Masterson's just pressing the buttons. Is that what's going on?
All right, well, first of all, I just want to thank the school committee last spring... I must have done something. Can you hear me? All right, sorry. Last spring, Mrs. Coughlin and I happened to come here to present to you the proposal for the Washington, DC trip, and this is really a worthwhile trip. This is my first year actually coordinating the trip as a whole, with the support of my staff, and I just want to take the time. This was a really meaningful, direct connection to what we're learning in social studies, so to have that opportunity to enhance the kids' learning, even if it was just within the first three months, there's so much that we go over in class, whether it be ranging from World War I, World War II, the Holocaust. There's a variety of topics that, when you actually go and see the museums, the monuments, and you're hearing from the tour guides, especially on a weekend as sacred and profound as Veterans Day, it is incredibly moving for the kids. So, I just want to take the time to thank you for your support and allowing us to go on this trip. So, just a couple of things about the trip, you can flip the slide, yeah. So, 140 students attended the trip between North Cumberland and McCourt Middle School. 14 chaperones traveled as well. We went through Jump Street, which is a tour company that's based out of Montreal. We've had great success with the company before, because we have also gone to, with that particular tour company, through the Quebec trip. Additionally, with the Jump Street coordination, they were able to provide three tour guides, which was great, because we had three buses. There was additionally a tour evaluator, which was there for the particular individuals who were giving the trip, which was great, because she was able to add in further insight. So, basically, it's a three-night trip, four days. So, we boogie on out early in the morning, 6 o'clock on Friday, Friday morning on November 10th, and we got to DC actually in perfect timing relatively. We were slated to get there around 3:15. We were there by 3:30 in Arlington National Cemetery. Happened to be the chillest day of the four days that we were there. It was about, I would say, 35, 40 degrees. It was a little bit chilly, but it got warmer, nice, you know, and nicer throughout the trip. So, pretty much the trip encompassed a blend of museums, walking tours, and also seeing the monuments. Okay, so for the accommodations, we ended up going to a different hotel this year. It actually ended up being like a rock star, top-quality hotel. They even like arranged it perfectly, the tour company, where they had virtually like both floors that we were on, you know, mixed like perfectly with our groups, the chaperones. Our rooms were stationed around the kids' rooms, which was great. It was easy access. The hotel served us a continental breakfast every day, plenty of food. No kid went without anything. Great meal selection. Jump Street did a great job of... Jump Street did a great job of blending in vouchers, the food vouchers, that provided them with a variety of options. Every kid's appetite was tended to. And then for dinner, we went to a variety of different places from Bertucci's, Pizzeria Uno, and we also went into Old Alexandria to the fish market. Kids didn't just have fish for an option, there was plenty of other meals that they could choose from. So definitely the highlights of the trip, Arlington is always one of those very moving parts of the trip. It really sets the tone for the kids on the respect level. The kids were excellent on this trip. Definitely, we can speak from both schools, they're rock stars, and they already are to begin with, but just the level of respect from the kids was awesome. And that always sets the tone, especially on Veterans Day weekend. We did a Capitol tour on Saturday, which was nice. We went around the grounds of the Capitol Building, Supreme Court, and outside of the south wing of the White House, the South Lawn. And then additionally during the trip as well, students were brought to the north section, which was nice because you got a close-up view of the White House. We went to the National Holocaust Museum. We hadn't gone here in about two years. I really want to thank Dr. Masterson because he pushed for this. It was a nice experience because students particularly had just wrapped up a unit on the Holocaust. This was quite moving for them and they were actually able to relate a lot to what was being spoken about in the museum. All students, when they got to the foyer of the museum, got a card and in that packet, each student received a message of a victim of the Holocaust and their story, where they came from, which was quite unique, very unique souvenir to bring home, something complimentary from the museum. And I know all students ended up bringing their cards back into my classroom afterwards to speak on behalf of, wow, this person came all the way from the Ukraine and unfortunately was lost at Auschwitz-Burkinau. This is quite the journey that they lived on, you know, toiled on, and then lo and behold, the story that they have afterwards about them talks about their family and the survivors, which is quite unique. Additionally, we went to the museum. That's a nice way of blending in significant events. They actually have like slabs from the Berlin Wall at the museum, so current events, media-wise, great experience. We went to the Udbar Hazy Museum. That's like the large space museum. It's outside, it's in Chantilly. You can see everything from planes that were used in World War II to the actual Enola Gay, which was the plane that dropped the atomic bomb on Hiroshima. A lot of these different aircrafts that we talk about in class, you know, really it's surreal to see that in real life. Mount Vernon and Ford's Theater as well, always highlights of our trip. The kids definitely take an appreciation to seeing the first president's home. It's quite unique. So these were just some of the highlights of the trip. In front of the White House, the Space Museum on the bottom left, Mount Vernon in the center, a far-reaching photo of the Washington Monument in D.C. And then when you walk into the Holocaust Museum, you see these words from famous Holocaust survivor Ellie Vizel, who happened to unfortunately pass away on July 2, 2016. "For the dead and the living, we must bear witness." And that was printed on every card that a student brought home. And this was just a final photo from us, majority of the group, at Mount Vernon after we finished our tour. So I would like to thank you once again, and if you have any questions for me, that's what I'm here for.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Pleasure, the committee? Any comments?
I have a quick question. You know, I've had the pleasure of, I don't know if it's a pleasure going to the Holocaust Museum, but I have had a chance to visit the Holocaust Museum a couple times and one of the things that was, it is an amazing place. If you haven't had a chance to go, you know, it's one of those things that you really need to put on your bucket list because it is a moving experience. And two things that stand out in my mind, actually, there are several things that stand out in my mind, but one is when you actually see the barracks, they have barracks that, you know, Holocaust, victims of Holocaust people in the concentration camps actually slept on there, that, you know, I mean, right from Germany. And they also, like, when you end the tour, there are the shoes. Do you recall that?
There's the shoes, so it's a four-level museum. And yeah, you have the barracks because they dedicate that second floor to the, you know, you have to face it, the six major death camps that were created in 1942. And then, yeah, you have the shoe room and then you go into the final memorial, which is quite moving. It has six sides to it.
There are actual, like, the shoes of people who were in the camps and you can like smell the leather and it is, it is, it is a moving experience. I'll never forget this, my son, who is a teacher now and in his 30s, he was, it was shortly after the Holocaust Museum opened, we spent a lot of time in Washington, D.C. And they have, at that particular time, they had these little rooms where they would show actual video of the camps and all different kinds of things. And I remember entering one of these little venues where they have these videos playing and my son, who I believe was probably 12 or 13 at the time, sat next to a woman who, when watching the video, just started to cry. And he, I could see that he was making a connection between what she was seeing and why she was crying. He made the connection that this woman was Jewish. And, you know, I could just see it in his face that he understood why she was responding the way that she's responding. So it is, it is definitely one of those, it is moving and if you haven't been to Arlington National Cemetery, there is something very sacred about that place too. So it's one of those things, if you haven't had a chance to visit, you definitely got to put it on your bucket list. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
Anyone else on the committee? Excellent, great presentation, Mr. Connolly. Easy with the microphone. There you go. Mr. Chandler will be calling you tomorrow. Your internet will be down. All right, excellent. Dr. Masterson, anything else to add? Excellent, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Chairperson's Report. At this time, no new update regarding fiscal year 2018 budget update. There will be some updates coming shortly as we progress. Next item on the agenda is the reports of standing committees, payment of bills. Mr. Demodica.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Subcommittee did meet on Tuesday. We reviewed the check registers and on a 3-0 vote, we approved sending to the full committee the payment of the bills in the amount of $1,511,962.21. I move passage.
Mr. Demodica is moving passage for the payment of bills. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman. Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? Eyes have it. Thank you, Mr. Demodica. 6-0. Next item on the agenda, Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Mr. Demodica.
Mr. Chairman, we did get a monthly report from the Business Office. We are running ahead of budget at this time, but things shake out later on during the year as we get into the rest of the fiscal year. We did, we got an update on some of the work that was done at Community School, North Cumberland Middle and Garvin Schools in regards to summer work. And we talked about, Mr. Pugnano got approval from the Town Council for additional work that, which will happen this summer, going on with new unit events, some mass vestiges removal at Community School and Cumberland High School as well. And so that's our update. We did ask about, Mr. Fiorello asking about doing some additional work at the cafeteria at Community School, which we will be taking a look at as well in regards to doing some more work this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Next item on the agenda is the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorello.
Policy and Procedures did meet this evening upstairs. We discussed B2, the Code of Basic Management Principles and Ethical School Standards for the school committee. We, the discussion was about an increase in the stipend that we each receive. Any increase would not take place until after, of course, the next election. No one's really quite sure when the last time the stipend was increased. It's at least a dozen years. We're not even sure if we'll be able to find out how long ago it's been. This has been an ongoing conversation, not only with us but with the Town Council. The Town Council is going to be increasing their stipend. They suggest that we do the same. Their intention is to tie their stipend to a percentage of the mayor's salary, which if they do what they're speaking of, would probably increase their stipend to close to $5,000 a year, which is currently 2,400 on their end. My suggestion that I brought forward was much more, thank you, conservative, I was thinking more along the lines of a $3,000 stipend for each of us with an increase for the chairman above that. We're still in talks about what that's going to look like. We also want to see what the Town Council finally shakes out, what they decide to do. Right now, the Fire Committee is making 3,800, Mr. Demodica? Something like that, somewhere in the range between 32 and 3,800. So the Town Council has been talking about it for the last couple of years, we've talked about it for the last couple of years and we feel this is the time to do it. So we'll be having this discussion again at the first meeting in January, where we'll probably have a final draft of the policy and hopefully a vote will be on it. If anybody has any questions between now and then, please ask and of course, we'll go from there. We also discussed D10, the school committee approval of contracts, which we discussed about a month ago. This was really just something that Mr. Demodica had brought forward as the fiscal chair, just making sure that the school committee approves any contracts that are being entered into, that we are tied to fiscally, so that we can have some oversight on it. That was also tabled and will come back at a future meeting again. We had more questions and the administration will come back with those answers. We also voted on G18, the Personnel Record Retention. We've recently done record retention policies in other areas. We thought it might be good to have a Personnel Record Retention Policy and we cleaned that up from the last time that we met and we'll be voting on that policy later this evening.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. I suggest you keep your Policy and Procedure meetings on Thursday because it's fresh on your mind. Excellent, so just, it's a compliment, Mr. Fiorello, it's a compliment. Next item on the agenda, Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. Mrs. Goggan.
I'm filling in for Mr. Denon tonight. We met on Tuesday and we discussed the program of studies for the class of 22, 2022, this year's eighth graders. I believe Mrs. Delfino and Mrs. Dion worked on it and they showed us a draft. Some of the changes, some were suggested changes to graduation requirements, so that's going to end up in policy first. And there was some more language on career pathways and CHS paths. I think we're probably going to have another meeting just on pathways at some point to talk about the benefit, pros and cons of that. There's an addition of world language instructional assistance for students who have completed all the world languages classes to go back and help out in Level 1 of world languages. So that's kind of an interesting opportunity, probably for seniors. And we discussed the Earned Honors Credits, which has been in the program of studies, which allows students who get all fours in certain standards and CP classes to get honors credits. And we discussed the benefits of that and whether it was necessary for students to have that option if the honors course is offered and I hope to revisit that soon, too.
Excellent. Leaps and bounds, Mrs. Goggan, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Comments from the Public. Please step up to the microphone if you'd like to make any comments. Hearing none, we'll continue on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearing, Reading of Amended Policies. B2, Code of Basic, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fiorello, go ahead.
B2 was tabled, so we don't need to read that into the record, as well as D10 was also tabled. I would ask that G18, the Personnel Record Retention Policy be read into the record so that we can have the first vote on it later this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Next item on the agenda is the Public Comment Regarding D10, School Committee Approval of Contracts, which was tabled, or the G18 Personnel Record Retention that was read into the record. If you would have anything to say in regards to these policies, please step up to the microphone. Hearing none, we'll call that closed. Next item on the agenda is Old Business, Update with Durham School Services Bus Tracking App. Mr. Mitchell, do we have an update?
We do have an update. I did speak to Paul Neves and he sends his regrets, both he and Andatory were not able to attend the meeting this evening. And he did provide me a quick update. He said that they are working on the tracker app, but apparently there is, according to Paul, an issue with GPS zones and apparently, according to the email that I received, the GPS zones are not reading correctly. So that is an issue that corporate and the local Durham team is working on and they will, you know, continue to give us updates moving forward.
Mr. Mitchell, do we have, do we have this timed line for resolution on these actions that need to be corrected in regards to?
I did not, I did not get any indication as to when they thought that this app would be ready for use.
Any questions by the committee in regards to this? Mr. Fiorello?
I just find it coincidental that on the night that we are receiving this news about the bus tracking app, that neither, that no one from Durham could have come to speak on this. That's all, just a little.
Mr. Mitchell, I ask that we stay on top of this and get it agended on our next school committee meeting. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, New Business, Discussion of School Start Times. Mr. Mitchell.
Just a, just a quick update. I think, I think you all know that I have been appointed to a State House Commission that is reviewing school start times and in fact, we've had three meetings and actually had a meeting, a State House, a meeting at the State House on Tuesday. And part of the process is hearing from districts that are, that have made the change to a later start time, and East Greenwich is an example. And we also heard from the Superintendent Schools in Barrington, Mike Missori, who has spent a tremendous amount of time and effort. He, along with several members of the Barrington School Department and members of the community have done a lot of work on this. They've been actually working on this since 2012 and have not been able to actually make it a reality. But Mike Missori did present on Tuesday. We got a wealth of information from the Chair of the East Greenwich School Committee as well, very articulate representative of that community. They have made the change. I believe that they only made the, I think their start time now is right around 8:00. It was at 7:30. It is now 8:00 and based on the information provided by the Chair of the East Greenwich School Committee, they have seen some positive results. They do expect some research to be provided soon. Apparently, there is a doctor who is conducting some research on the impact of that move. So we have that going on and I know that at one time, Mr. Chairman, we talked, I had mentioned that I had been in contact with the MIT Operations, Innovations Operations Center with a professor by the name of Dimitri Bertsimis. We had talked a while ago and I had not heard back from him, so I sent him an email and followed up with a phone call this week and talked about, you know, I refreshed his memory about our conversation, which he said that he recalled. And I have some information to share with you and the committee as, for us to consider. And just so that everyone knows, I, it is, Um, and- and- and just so that everyone knows, I- it is- it is the, um, MIT, uh, Innovations Operations Center that was involved in creating the algorithm that is being used by the city of Boston. And the city of Boston, some of you may have seen the article in the, uh, in the news recently. All, um, Boston, uh, public schools are gonna be starting at eight, high schools are gonna be starting at eight-thirty, um, I believe for the upcoming school year.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mrs. Goggins?
I just, um, certainly, I think this is an important thing to do, and I think that all- everything shows that, um, but I'm sure we're also all following, um, what's going on in Boston, and that is that they moved the elementary schools way up. Do you know, in East Greenwich, did they keep elementary schools at the same time?
You know, I actually have, uh, the report, actually have both Barrington and East Greenwich's report that they developed, um, in, you know, in- in, um, planning this implementation. I don't- I don't believe that there was a significant difference in start time for the elementary schools. You know, there's always consideration that because, I mean, by all accounts, the little ones, um, are up earlier, and, uh, you know, and- and I think, you know, we have, um, elementary school teachers here this evening. Uh, you know, I have heard for years and years and years that, you know, at the end of the day, you know, at two, two-thirty, you know, three o'clock, they're running out of steam. So I, you know, I- I think, is it unreasonable for districts to consider, you know, uh, maybe an earlier start time for the elementary schools? But certainly, any decision that you make is, you know, um, there are- there are always gonna be unanticipated consequences. So I do think that moving forward, we need to consider all of these things, but, you know, I've said this many times, and- and- and I, you know, I think everyone knows that I, you know, was a high school administrator for eighteen years, and this, to me, is a health issue, and the challenges for us is how to, um, fund it, but the bigger question is, and- and- and that is a serious consideration. If we don't have the money, how can we support it? But to me, the- the- the big question is, what is the right thing to do? And there's no question, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but there- there's no question that the research is crystal clear that teenagers aren't getting enough sleep. And I'm not just talking about high school kids, I'm- I mean, I'm talking also middle schools. I- I don't- I don't wanna make this a move, or even, and I'm just speaking for myself, certainly, the school committee would ultimately decide, but where, you know, when, I don't think it's a- appropriate to make a decision of this magnitude at the expense of the start time of the middle school or any other level. So there's a lot for us to consider, and, uh, even if we had the money, you know, we're gonna, we have some work to do to convince everyone that it's the right thing to do. But the research, there's no question that the research is clear on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Further comment? Mr. Fiorello?
Mr. Mitchell, could you, uh, share the documents from East Providence, I mean, East Greenwich and Barrington with us?
Of course.
Thank you.
Mr. Fiorello, any further comment? Next item on the agenda, discussion and our vote to approve overnight student field trip. Cumberland High School Band Music in Parks, Newark, New Jersey. Anyone here to represent? Come on up to the podium, my friend, state your name. Hello, Michael, welcome. What would you like to tell us about this trip? Mr. Connolly broke the microphone. Okay.
Only two nights, three days this time, smaller trip, uh, 'cause I'm thinking ahead, I- I'm thinking Disney either twenty-nineteen or twenty?
What is the date of this trip?
Um, this one is Memorial Day weekend. Um, the festival takes place on Friday, um, so it's Thursday, and I think it's the, uh, twenty-fourth, I have to look at the calendar, Thursday through Saturday. We get home Saturday night, and that's, uh, Memorial Day weekend, with Memorial Day being on that Monday.
Done this trip before?
Uh, no, we did a music in the parks trip, but it was actually to Cleveland, Ohio. Um, so that was a- a further trip, but it was the same, um, festival, so we go to compete with the concert bands.
Excellent. And this trip is in compliance with, per our policy?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Any discussion from the committee? Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Salvatore, um, just, there is a, you know, a- a pretty, um, involved application that has to be completed, as you all know, and Mr. Ferrochi, um, has done that, uh, very appropriately. And as far as the Hershey Park thing, I mean, this is, this, um, this is a competition that has been taking place for years and years and years, and I know that my, both my older son and daughter, um, actually competed when they were, um, students in- in high school, so it has a reputation for being, uh, you know, a fun, um, competition, so.
Classic trip.
Excellent. How- how many students?
I'm looking to bring fifty students, as- as many as fifty students, and probably, um, six or a few more adults, chaperones.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Are- are you also here to speak about the Cumberland High School Theater?
Uh, actually?
Okay, so we'll- we'll take the vote on this one. So pleasure of the committee. Mrs. Friedman makes a motion to approve the Cumberland High School Band Music in the Parks with a- a modified location of the Hershey Park, Pennsylvania, Memorial Day. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Demodica, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, six-zero. Have a great time.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Looking forward to the pictures and?
Absolutely, I will give all of that.
And chocolate. Mr. Hess wants chocolate.
I'll see if I can bring you back some chocolate.
Thank you.
Have a great night, thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda? Next item on the agenda is the Cumberland High School Theater Northeast Theater Festival in Portland, Maine. Please come up to the microphone and state your name, my friend.
Good evening. My name is Bob DiMartino. I'm the director of the CHS Theater Program. Um, last spring, I was here talking about the trip to the International Thespian Festival in Lincoln, Nebraska, and what I had said was that, uh, theater festivals are different than music festivals, there's never a park, there is never a trophy, um, but it is, it- it's complete immersion, uh, in theater for the amount of time they're there. We're looking at, this is a, it's a two-day festival, so it's, it's kind of, what I told the committee about last year for the International Theater Festival, it's that in a much smaller scale, obviously. It's a northeast, uh, we'll have schools from New Jersey, um, New York, and New England, and it's in, uh, uh, excuse me, um, it is, um, at the, uh, University of Southern Maine. Um, we are planning on lea- leaving the nineteenth of January after school and returning the following day, Saturday.
Mr. - Mr. DiMartino, how many students?
Uh, we're looking at probably six. It's just a small group.
Mr. Mitchell, anything to weigh in on this?
You know, I just, um, I mean, certainly, I- I support, uh, field trips of this nature, right? It's a wonderful opportunity for students. I just- I just have a couple, two concerns about this particular trip. One is, and the reason that it's on the agenda is because it's in January, so it's, right, it's in January, Bob, so it's not that far away. I, the, just so that you all know, here's how the process works. The, uh, individual, the- the- the teacher or the group that wants to bring students on a field trip, there is, as I mentioned, with Mr. Ferrochi, there is an extensive application that must be completed. It has to be completed, uh, completely, um, so there's, I think there's some work that needs to be done on the application, but my biggest concern is, um, transportation, and on the application, you indicated that you would be providing private transportation, and I- I have a little concern about private transportation and the exposure that, um, it- it may present to the- to the district. So I don't, I don't know that private cars, is an appropriate way to be transporting students to, on field trips, and I- and I- and I just mentioned it to Steve, I- and I- I just, and again, it, you know, if we had more time, we could have dealt with this, um, outside of this meeting, but I just wanted to, um, share my concern about that particular issue, the transportation issue.
Did you have another concern as well, Mr. Mitchell?
Well, it wa- it just, I just, n- n- we just need to make sure that the application, the current, most current application is completed thoroughly.
Application, transportation, transportation. Mr. DiMartino?
Yes.
What were your plans for the transportation?
Uh, I actually, um, thought it might not be, um, it might not be a bad idea to, uh, rent a van, um, and, uh, transport students with a van. Uh, as far as insurance goes, whatever, my personal insurance wouldn't cover the, uh, because it is a, uh, International Thespian Society event, and we are an International Thespian Society school, we have insurance coverage through them, and I can get a, I can get documentation for that if that's, uh, what we need.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Mitchell?
I just, I mean, I- I hope you understand, I- I mean, I'm looking at this strictly from, uh, a legal standpoint, and- and, as I said, I- I just am concerned about, you know, the district being exposed in some way, um, legally, so whatever we can do to get that issue resolved. I mean, I- I think, I wanna support, um, the students attending this, uh?
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Fiorello, could you weigh in on this?
Uh, private car is allowed by our overnight travel policy, um, so there is that. I would say that legal would be the deciding factor in this, though.
Mr. Fiorello, what is that policy number on that? Do you have it?
It is I-ten, and it is section four, which states method of travel.
Mr. Adams? Could you weigh in on this, please?
My, I mean, my- my concern is just about whether, what the coverage would be, you know, and h- and how that would work. I mean, I don't, I don't know what the trust covers, um, in terms of, um, overnight trips generally, or even specifically. I- I would just wanna make sure that there was ample coverage, because it's really only about something unfortunate that could happen, that could expose the, uh, the district to some liability, and I would be, that would be what I would wanna run down, or have, uh, administration run down with potentially the trust, because I assume that it is the trust that is the carrier for the district on any sort of transportation-related issue to the extent that it's impacted, but I don't know whether Tina knows anything more than I do about that.
Mrs. Vogel, could you come up to the microphone, please?
I'm gonna be discussing this, or I'd have my collective bargaining agreement. There is a, um, a provision in the collective bargaining agreement that indicates that teachers are not to drive students, and so I think the policy indicates if, you know, maybe parents were going to drive, I- I think my concern would be that Mr. DiMartino unintentionally would be violating the collective bargaining agreement, but I can go check that, um, just to make sure if he were to be the one to drive it.
So, I've got a, Mr. Adams, I- I'm thinking this trip is five weeks away. Our next school committee meeting is January eleventh. Would this give, Mr. Mitchell, would this give Mr. DiMartino an ample amount of time to prove to this committee that everyone is in compliance to take this trip in regards to transportation? If we table it and move it to January eleventh?
Would, I- I, and again, I- I- I would, um, ask, uh, Mr. Adams for his guidance on this, but what if, I mean, we could s- get on, start, get on this tomorrow, and certainly we would have next week, and then we're on vacation, so we would wanna get this done. If all of the, um, requirements are met, uh, in the application, and- and we get this transportation issue resolved, I mean, I mean, would I, um, have the support of the committee in approving the trip?
So, Ms- Mr. Adams, we could, we could approve this request tonight under the stipulations of the concerns of the superintendent? Be met? Mr. Adams, should we, we should we meet in- in a private?
Is there any harm in tabling it to the eleventh?
Okay, that's what I'm?
I'm asking you.
All right, the only qu- the only?
P. Martino?
Harm that I could, I could see is that according to policy, I cannot collect money from the students until it's been approved by the committee.
Okay, so that is a harm. That's a legit harm. Um, I guess my- my concern would be, I didn't realize what Ms. Vogel said, that that's an, that's a, that's, you might have to hire a van, hire a company to do the transportation, and that may increase the cost.
It will increase the cost.
But I, it's, you know, that's, that's life, I guess, and that may resolve some of the issues, because they will likely have, um, as all these trips, I'm sure the Hershey trip as well is a, is a bus or whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. So we could, Mr. Adams?
You can, you can.
Okay.
As long as that is met, but I think that that would be a proviso for the, I would make, I'm, you're not telling you, Mr. DiMartino, how to do it, but you'd probably wanna alert the- the students that whatever the cost is, it may go up a little bit, because?
Because we would need to have a, hire a driver.
Yeah. But yeah, so?
So, uh, i- i- if I'm, that's what I was going to ask, if I could be clear about that. A parent, a parent is, it would not be in violation of the collective bargaining agreement if we had a parent drive?
Correct. Mr. - Mr. DiMartino, Mr. Demodica, did you?
Mr. DiMartino, do you know if there's any other school districts in the area that would be going as well?
We are the only school from Rhode Island that is going.
Cost of sharing wouldn't be allowed then.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Mr. DiMartino, I'm- I'm a big fan of supporting the arts, especially in schools. Um, I- I feel comfortable asking this committee to approve your request as long as all the criteria is fulfilled. Uh, in respect to our legal counsel and- and our superintendent. I would like to, um, get an update on the eleventh, even though?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Pleasure of the committee, in regards to the Cumberland High School Theater Northeast Theater Festival, Portland, Maine, January ninth.
Chairman, I would make a motion we approve, subject to the, uh, documentation, uh, getting to the superintendent's office for his approval.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion to approve the request of the Cumberland High School Theater in relation to the modifications met per our superintendent and legal counsel. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Goggins, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, six-zero. Mr. DiMartino, I saw you sweating it out.
(laughing).
But, uh, please?
Thank you very much.
I do ask humbly that you jump on these requests by tomorrow.
Absolutely. All right, thank you very much.
Have a great time. Next item on the agenda, discussion and our vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year. Mrs. Vogel? No, I apologize. Mr. Mitchell?
I re- I recommend approval, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Hess makes a motion to approve the homeschool instruction request for the seventeen-eighteen school year. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman, all in favor? Eyes have it, six-zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and our vote to approve amended policies. B-two, the Code of Basic Management Principles and Ethical School Standards, which was tabled. Next item on the agenda, discussion and our vote to approve the first reading of policies. We can take these together? No, Mr. Fiorello?
D-ten was also tabled.
Tabled.
Uh, I would ask, though, that the first reading, um, of G- eighteen personnel record retention be read. Uh, we don't, yeah, I know.
It's a vote, thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Pleasure?
Actually, we don't need to vote.
We don't?
Okay. Because it's just a reading of the policy and the record.
Excellent.
We will vote in January.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello, so we'll, for the record, uh, the G- eighteen personnel record retention was read into the record. Next item on the agenda, personnel recommendations. Mrs. Vogel, now I got it right. Folks, another two hours? Just kidding, just kidding.
All right, so I have a number of personnel recommendations for you this evening. Uh, the first group is retirements, so I request the advice and consent of the school-
So I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the retirement of Catherine Lambert, kindergarten teacher at community school effective January 2nd, 2018, after 21 years of service. Ms. Lambert is here. We'll celebrate her in June, but she's here anyway, so I thought I'd recognize her. And the other retirement is Christine Samansky, secondary mathematics teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective at the end of the school year after 24 years of service.
Excellent. Well, not excellent retirement, but excellent community service as a teacher. Thank you. So Mrs. Vogel is requesting the approval of two retirements. Pleasure of the committee.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve the two retirements. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Goggins, all in favor? I'm sorry, was it Mrs. Goggins?
(laughing)
Oh, with sadness, I know. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, 6-0.
The next, I have some leave of absences. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the FMLA leave of absence of Michelle Cole, kindergarten teacher at community school effective December 4th, 2017, because she went earlier than we thought, with an anticipated return date of February 5th, 2018. Kate McMaro, teaching and learning coach at Cumberland High School, with an effective date of February 1st, 2018, with an anticipated return date of May 21st, 2018, and the unpaid leave of Nicole Lanny, secondary English teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective January 2nd, 2018, through the end of the 17-18 school year.
Pleasure of the committee for the request of approving to FMLA in an unpaid leave. Mr. Demodica makes a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it, 6-0.
Then I have a few appointments for you. So I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the appointment of Lorna Aronson, classroom paraprofessional at the ICANN program at Garvin Memorial School, effective December 11th, 2017. This one is a budgeted position, it, it filled a position that was vacant, that we had open. Carissa Patrizio, kindergarten teacher at community school, we're asking her to be retroactively paid through August 29th. She has been the kindergarten teacher that's been filling in for Ms. Lambert while she's been out, so she would be a Step 1, no lane, 20% co-share. She is also budgeted. And lastly, Sarah Godino, who would be an English language teacher at Cumberland High School, with an effective date of hopefully December 18th, 2017, she's a Step 10. We'd also pay her her masters. This is unbudgeted, and the reason she would get her masters is because she, if you remember correctly, was a previously a Spanish teacher at North Cumberland Middle School and was cut due to the budget. This is an, did I say it's an, it's unbudgeted because, based on the number of students at the high school that receive English language services, we've made a determination that we just need additional support, so we're coming to you with this request. Alex does know about it. But we felt that even though new employees do not receive their masters, because Ms. Godino did not resign, she left because we didn't have a position for her, that she shouldn't be penalized under the contract, so we had discussed that.
Mrs. Vogel, that's four appointments?
Uh, just three, I'm sorry.
Three appointments, I, I apologize. Pleasure of the committee on the passage of the three appointments Mrs. Vogel presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Not everybody at once. Mr. Demodica has a motion to approve the three appointments. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman, I feel like an auctioneer. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, 6-0.
Lastly, I have the coaching appointments, and so I'm just going to run through them off, if that's okay?
How many do we have, Mrs. Vogel?
I have a lot. I have all the winter appointments, so I'm just going to crank them out. So I request the advice and consent of the following coaching appointments. Mark Andreozzi, hockey varsity. Jonathan Paquin, hockey junior varsity. George Codere, girls' basketball varsity. Andrea Harnoy, junior varsity basketball girls. Joshua Lima, boys indoor track varsity. Carrie Carpenter, boys indoor track junior varsity. Vanessa Malloy, girls indoor track varsity. Colin Cabral, girls indoor track vars, uh, junior varsity. Gary Reedy, boys varsity basketball. Kyle Landry, boys junior varsity basketball. Roderick McGarry, swim. Stephen Gordon, wrestling varsity. Colin Smith, wrestling junior varsity. Rachel Powell, winter cheerleading. Brandon Hanaway, girls basketball at McCourt. David DeJesus, girls basketball at North. Austin Silva, boys basketball at McCourt. John Madden, boys basketball at North. Taylor Dugan, wrestling at McCourt, and Stephen Gorman, wrestling at NCMS.
Mrs. Vogel, I counted 20 appointments to coaching.
You're probably right. I think you're right.
Pleasure of the committee for a passage.
Just one question.
Mr. Demodica?
Mrs. Vogel, do we have any open positions, or are we going to all fill?
We do, my understanding is there's a weight room supervisor, but they usually fill that internally at the high school. There are currently no winter sports that are open. We will have, we do have some spring ones we have to fill.
I make a motion we approve.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion to approve the 20 appointments. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Goggins, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vogel. Next item on the agenda is the Personnel Record Reten, no, I'm sorry, I apologize, Personnel. School Committee Comments, School Liaison Reports. Pleasure of the committee. Mrs. Goggins?
Um, I'd just like to start, because I'm one of the liaisons to community, by congratulating you again on the blue ribbon, and Mrs. Lucier, congratulations, very happy for you. And Mrs. Lambert, I'm, I'm, I'm sad, but, but I'm happy for you. And I just want to say, I attended the NCMS Holiday Fair last weekend, and it was great. It was, I think it was really well-attended, and they had the chorus singing, and it was really pretty great.
Awesome. Excellent. Anyone else? Mr. Hess?
So I would just like to say that my wife and I had the joy of attending the NCMS Holiday Band and Chorus Concert last night. They did a wonderful job, it was great to hear from McCourt as well. I'd like to thank the band and chorus directors for, and the children for sharing the gift of music with us during this holiday season.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Hess? Anyone else? Mr. Fiorello?
I also attended the holiday concert at McCourt. These days have just been blending in together, I'm not sure when it was, but it was excellent. The, the two choruses sang, and they were just, you saw tonight's McCourt, McCourt's select chorus, and they did a great job. The band, which has been struggling in recent years, has many more members, it sounds so much better. Mr. Bowser is doing a great job with them, and I'd be remiss in saying that Shannon Davis is doing a, is not, is doing a great job with the choir, so.
Excellent.
It was a good time.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. I attended that event also, and that a, it was packed, it was, it was full. It was standing room only in the back, so it was very moving. Next item, oh, Mrs. Friedman?
So I would just like to add that my daughter is one of a small handful of Jewish kids at NCMS, and I just want to say how accepting everyone is, and, and how proud she is. And if you've, if you've seen her this week, every day she has some new Hanukkah gear on, and she's dying for the ugly sweater contest, because she thinks she could win that as the only Jewish kid with the ugly Hanukkah sweater. So I, I just want to say that, you know, at this time of year, it's really great, and especially her English teacher, I can't remember her name right now, who's really gone out of her way, and she has a menorah in the classroom, and it's those little things that go a long, long way. So thank you for that.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Friedman, and thank you to, to North Cumberland Middle School. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mitchell, do we have executive session?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Next item on the agenda is to adjourn. Pleasure of the committee.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Fiore, Mr. Hess?
No.
Mr. Fiorello, all in, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman, Mr. Hess, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Happy holidays.